Yeah, my parents only had a great time when they did theirs.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September 9, 2013 Board of Education meeting. This is a very exciting meeting for a couple of different reasons. One is it's the first meeting after the start of a new school year, always a time of renewal and excitement here in Guilford. But also because this is the meeting that we introduce the new faculty to the community and it's also a time of renewal and excitement that we always very much look forward to. But I'd like to start, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the board's permission, I think in light of the fact that our new faculty has had a long day in their in their school buildings already and has to start early tomorrow, I'd like to suggest that we move Agenda Item 8.1 up to this point in the agenda. It's my understanding that Dr. Freeman, Mr. Bowden is going to be at least initially introducing the new faculty, and so I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bowden.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Education and audience tonight, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce our new members of our certified staff to Guilford Public Schools. It's been a very busy summer in the HR office, as you can see from the audience. Between new positions, resignations, and retirements, we've come close to hiring a person a day throughout the months of July and August. I have to really start by saying and extending special thanks to those that have served on a number of different hiring committees. I'd like to thank the administrative staff, the principals, and also the central office staff who worked tirelessly throughout the summer to process each of the 34 certified staff members hired since June. Dr. Keane and I worked with this freshman class of teachers over the course of three days in August during the new teacher orientation, and I think we can both honestly say how impressed we were with this group of educators. We've done a tremendous job hiring the best and the brightest in the state of Connecticut to come to our school system. I'd like to take a moment and introduce each of the new members to you from the certified staff, and if you direct your attention to the PowerPoint. From A.W. Cox Elementary School, we have Christina Fontana, Grade 2; Carrie Kennedy, Grade 1; Megan Moran, Special Education; Joyce Ann Piperbring, Reading; Tara White, Kindergarten; Heather Whitaker, Grade 2; from Calvin Leet; Alicia Bergano, Special Education; Betsy Kaplan, Special Education; Kelly Metzler, Grade 3; from Guilford Lakes Elementary School; Jennifer Bunger, Special Education, Pre-K; Greg Shilaski, Special Education; from Alyssa Jones Elementary School; Teresa Viazzarelli, Elementary Spanish; Derek DeLucio, Physical Education; Kristen Lemay, Special Education; Robert Messer, Grade 3; Regina Santinello, Library Medias Specialist; Heather Gajewski, Special Education Coordinator; from Baldwin Middle School, we have Laura Degree, Special Education; Wendy Epke, Physical Education; Megan Ferrera, Literacy Coach; Robert McMillan, Grade 5; from Adams Middle School; Danielle Bailey, Special Education; Jaclyn Burns, Language Arts; Alicia Golameski, Grade 7, Mathematics; Julie Harrington, Art; Lauren McGinley, Language Arts; Jason Melver, Mathematics; at Guilford High School; Megan Cassidy, Art; Jenny Cox, English; Lauren D'Stasio-Zook, Special Education, Crossroads Program; Joseph Pangino, English; Nicole Rasmussen, School Counselor; Samantha Reardon, Science Alternative Education Program; Jason Scanziano, Special Education Coordinator; Elise Tisal, Special Education Alternative Education Program; and in district hires going back to January, Jason Bowden. Virginia Brown is Director of People's Services; in the district office, their accounting coordinator, Bretta Maynard; Christine Mancini, our interim Director of Food Services. And I'd like to also introduce, if I may, who were not on slides, but I'd like to mention our new administrative hires, all at Guilford High School. Julia Chaff, our new Assistant Principal at GHS; Donna Polinski, our new Dean of Students; and Joel Raven, our new Dean of Students.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome to everybody. Well, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, for those of you who are new to teaching, we are delighted that you've chosen to begin your careers with us here in Guilford. For those of you who are continuing after another position, same thing. We're just delighted that you've that you've chosen to further your careers here. This is, I think it's fair to say, an exciting time to be in public education. You're being asked to do more. You're being asked to look at things in a different way perhaps, but it's also an exciting time to be in Guilford. This is a great community. It's a great group of people, exciting, exciting group of students and great administrators, mostly good buildings. This one's going to get a little better, I think, sooner or later. But we do have high expectations for everybody, but probably they're no higher than your own expectations for yourself and the reason you went into teaching. You didn't go into teaching, you went into teaching to try to work with children who really need the gift of what you can give them. Our commitment here on the Board of Education is that we're going to work with you exactly as much as you need it, and we promise that we're going to give you the support that you need to become the absolute best teachers and administrators you can possibly be. So we look forward, without qualification, to working with you, moving forward, and really could not be happier that you have chosen to work with us. So on behalf of the entire board, thank you very much. Now, Dr. Freeman, given that they do have responsibilities tomorrow at a very early hour, you are certainly entitled to stay if you want. It's a public meeting. On the other hand, we wouldn't be offended if you decided that you wanted to go home and get your lessons together for tomorrow. So, thank you all.
I would encourage all of you to go ahead and take advantage of that invitation. We are very proud to have you in the community. I look forward to seeing you all in your classrooms. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Now, while they are leaving, I'm going to suggest that we, well, why don't we take action on the minutes? Why don't we just go ahead and do that, 3.1? The minutes of the August 12th meeting, a month with only one meeting seems like not really a month.
Yep.
Although there was no negotiating committee.
Yes, there was a few others. There was some other meetings.
So is there a motion to approve the August 12th meeting minutes?
So moved.
Any corrections, changes, additions, clarifications?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Dr. Myers, if you don't mind, I know you're the, well, let's go ahead and do that. Well, there's still a couple of people filtering in and out. I want to tinker with the agenda a little bit and try to move some other things around, but go ahead, why don't we move to Item 4, the review and expenditures for the month of August?
Okay, I'll be brief. We have two reports. The first one really governs fiscal year 2012, 2013, and even though that year is closed as of July 1st, we have some adjustments to make because of late arrival invoices. The bottom line is that we will end the year, the Board of Education will end the year with a unexpended and unencumbered balance of $75,398.55, which will be returned to the town and as per the request of the Board of Finance will go into the fund balance We also talked about in the Finance Committee, the August financial reports for 2013, 2014. Those expenditures for the month were $1,313,137.30, which is about 7.65% of the budget compared to 7.35% of the budget from the last fiscal year. Eighty-seven percent of all those monies were spent for payroll and benefits. It was summertime, and special ed students have an expanded summer schedule, so some teachers worked, obviously the full-time administrators worked through the summer. And there were supplies and dues and graduation expenses and so forth to make up the difference. So there was nothing surprising, nothing that was unanticipated, and there we are, Mr. Chair.
All right. We did review them in some detail in the Finance Committee meeting before this meeting, but is there a motion to approve the expenditures for the month of August?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, I think we'll stick with Item 5, Public Forum for Topics on the Board Agenda. Is there anybody who wants to address something on the Board Agenda at this time? No? All right. There are a couple of members of the High School Building Committee here, and I know Mr. Ireland is our liaison to the High School Building Committee. He's detained, he's going to be here shortly, and we may have to circle back to this to see if he has any additional comments, but in the interest of not keeping members of the Building Committee here until 10:30, given that they have another meeting tomorrow night, I'd like to suggest that we move up to this point on the Agenda, Item 11.4, which is a report from the Liaison to the High School Building Committee, but Dr. Freeman has cordially offered to present at least the data that he has at this point. Recognizing that, as I understand it, there is a full meeting of the High School Building Committee tomorrow.
Yes.
That is going to consider some issues that I think are of interest to the community, so that is at least scheduled and is going to go forward.
Yes, the Building Committee is scheduled to meet here in this space tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, and it is scheduled as a workshop meeting, similar to board meetings. I believe that workshop meetings tackle a smaller number of agenda items and generally don't have place for public comment. At last week's meeting on October 3rd, the Building Committee finalized the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price of the project. They also finalized their budget at this time. Tomorrow, my understanding, is that one of the workshop agenda items will be to reexamine the discussion of a black box theater in light of the new finalized budget. So what I'd like to do, if I may, is I will direct your attention first to the first piece of paper that came around. It is just the cover page and summary page from a report that was shared with the Building Committee last Tuesday evening from ONG Fusco, our construction managers. And the really important component there is to note that we have identified a guaranteed maximum cost. This is the price for which the construction firms will build our school, and barring change orders, this is the price that they are required to meet. So what you see in front of you for the guaranteed maximum price means that all of our bids have been received, bids have been awarded, all of the major contractors on this project have been identified, and we are ready to move forward. We know what our timeframe will be, and we know how much it will cost to build our school, and it is within the budget that was approved at referendum. Additionally, what I've passed around then, building off of that, is the project budget as it stands at this time. The Building Committee did approve this budget, but it's important to note, like our operating budget, that any budget is an organic and a living document. But at this time, what you see in front of you is the budget parceled out into the large components as the Building Committee expects to spend out this budget. So on the front page, filling the top two-thirds of the page, you see the construction cost, and it brings you down to the same guaranteed maximum price, $74,818,167. Those are the hard construction costs to have this school built. I will note that in the top part of this section, where you see things like site work and abatement and demolition, and they don't carry numbers with them, that does not mean that work is free. All of that work has been bundled together into Line 301, the $68,080,962 for all of the trade work that will be done. Other items below that number are broken out more specifically. The rest of the front page and the balance of the back page are owner's costs, or what is often identified as soft costs associated with the project. In there, you will see line items for moving costs. You will see line items for work that needs to be done along the way, changing parking lots and reapportioning the project as we go through different phases. You will see line items for FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment that will be purchased. You will see line items for technology that will be purchased into the school. There are two specific lines that I would like to draw your attention to. If you look at Line 840 on the back of the page, you will see the original line for furniture equipment, fitness equipment, et cetera, of 1.5 million. That was an original allowance that was put in place for FFNE. As we have gone through this project, the design portion of this project, as we've explored the way we want our classrooms to work through experiences like the learning studio, as the design of the building has in fact grown a little bit through this community opportunity to have input, as we've looked further at the ways that we want our classrooms to function, the Building Committee has added an additional 1.2 million in the second line, 880, for furniture fixtures and equipment. As the bids came in and as we recognized that the bids were coming in favorably, it makes sense at this point in the project to be sure that we are fitting out this school with high-quality furniture, with durable fittings and finishes, so that we don't end up supplementing construction costs through operating budgets in the early years of this building, so that we don't end up buying new chairs and desks four or five years in. So I thought that was an important item to point out to the Board. The Board will need to sign off on approval of all FFNE purchases with the Building Committee. So as you signed off on the designs, this is another item that will come before you for your approval before that purchase goes forward. And finally, I'd like to draw your attention to sort of the bottom bolded lines at the bottom of the document. Again, I noted that we are on budget. In fact, our bids have come in favorably. At this point, going into the project, the Building Committee is carrying an owner's unspecified contingency of approximately $5.5 million. That is a healthy contingency. There are always unexpected events that come up in a building project of this magnitude. I do need to point out that at this point, we aren't even fully out of the earth yet. We haven't finished blasting, we haven't finished excavation. We don't know what we don't know about this project yet, but to carry a contingency of that much on a project of this size places the town very favorably. It is slightly over what is recommended to carry as a contingency going into a project of this magnitude, not significantly over, but slightly over what's recommended. It is my understanding that in the workshop meeting tomorrow night that the Building Committee will be holding, again here, 7 o'clock tomorrow evening, that there will be some discussion about that contingency, anticipated uses of that contingency, and how the opportunity to address the idea of a black box theater may fit into that contingency. So I believe that that is on the agenda for tomorrow evening. Again, there may not be place on the agenda for public comment, but two weeks from tomorrow evening, when the Building Committee holds their regular meeting, there will be opportunity for the public to have comment at their meeting and talk about their position on any of what gets discussed tomorrow evening. The guaranteed maximum cost is still up. It's my understanding to be reviewed. It needs to be reviewed by council, and it is up, it's capable, it's possible that it may change slightly, but essentially that's the number, and the budget, as I said, has been approved, but budgets are living, organic documents. The last piece that I wanted to update, and Mr. Ireland and I spoke about updating the Board on this, and I don't have a handout to go with it, so I apologize, but when the project documents were approved by this Board and when they went out, they included the base bid, the base building that we wanted to buy, and then they included a list of ad alternates, options that we would purchase if we were in the position to be able to purchase those. They included components that either affect the functionality of the building, affect a large number of the people who utilize the building, or enhance the durability and reduce the maintenance costs associated. So the Building Committee did approve a slate of approximately $800,000 in ad alternates that included upgrading essentially all of the main public arteries in the hall, that all the main entrances and all the main feeder hallways from vinyl tile to porcelain tile. That immediately reduces maintenance costs associated with this school. Porcelain tile does not need to be waxed, buffed, and stripped annually or multiple times annually. So by increasing the amount of porcelain tile and reducing the amount of vinyl tile, we immediately reduce custodial hours involved in maintaining the building. We increased ceiling finishes in many of the main areas to move beyond white drop-in tile to a wood finish that should improve acoustics in those areas as well as be more durable. The wood finish in those areas will not sag, will not stain, and will not discolor, and so that wood finish should be with us for the life of the building and will not need to be on a replacement cycle. There were areas of the exterior of the building that were to be finished in galvanized steel. Those areas have been upgraded to a copper finish, which I have learned doesn't rust, doesn't require painting, and will not need to be replaced in 10 to 20 years. That finish on the exterior of the building will be with us for the life of the building and in fact will patina with the building as we age in the building. Additionally, the canopy in the front of the building, there was much discussion at the Building Committee, there was much public conversation about the canopy design. The original canopy that was designed for the building did in fact cover the entire front courtyard. When we began to be concerned about the bidding environment and whether or not we would come in on budget, we had designed a smaller, reduced canopy that did not cover the entire courtyard. It covered parts of the courtyard but didn't give full, complete coverage. The Building Committee, as an ad alternate, listed the original design and was able to return to that original design. There were other ad alternates that are much less exciting that have to do with heating controls and HVAC systems that get lost in the building, and Mr. Ireland could speak better to them than I, but I can report that the Building Committee adopted approximately $800,000 worth of ad alternates, which will go to make the building more durable, will lower maintenance costs, be more functional, and present itself well to this community when they come to the front of the building. That, in essence, summarizes the last couple of Building Committee meetings. I know I've mentioned that they will be meeting here tomorrow in this room at 7:00 PM, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can for the Board.
Well, it's obviously very, very good news that the bids came in where they did. It's a testament, I think, to a couple of things. One is good estimating, good planning, and good oversight by the Building Committee, because obviously the, rather high on our list of priorities was to make sure this gets done within the appropriated amount.
In fact, Mr. Blas, I apologize. Another piece that goes along with that is that it also, this process was opened up to be very open and was a very invitational process to the community, and in fact, the building that is being built on budget that came in very positively in bidding is in fact slightly over the square footage that we anticipated and that was identified in the original Ed specs. With the growth of some theater and music spaces and with the growth of some athletic spaces, we're actually slightly over the square footage that we anticipated and still doing it and bringing it in on the budget point that we are required to bring it in on.
There has been some community interest, I know, in the question about the black box theater, and can you just summarize what the, I mean, I don't think we've been asked formally for a position on that from the Building Committee. I don't know what their intention is in that respect, but can you just describe again what the, or summarize what the process is as far as the Building Committee, as you understand that the Building Committee's approach to that?
At this point, the black box theater is not part of the budget that I shared with you this evening. However, the Building Committee is moving forward in such a way that there is space allocated for the placement of a black box theater. They are making all decisions to be prepared for the idea of a black box theater that can be placed on the, I guess if you're looking at the building, if you're coming in from New England Road, entering from that northern entrance, it would be on the far-right extreme of the building, almost not visible from New England Road when you come in. As you come around the building and come to that western parking lot that faces the auditorium and the gymnasium, the black box theater would be a finger that extended off of the music wing of the school. At this point, it is not part of the budget, but I believe the intention tomorrow night is to discuss the possibility of moving forward in such a way and monitoring the budget in such a way that that decision, that that decision whether or not to include it and build it as part of this project can be delayed and can be looked at later in the project once we've come out of the ground, once we've made it over some construction hurdles and know that the contingency is not going to be spent to address unforeseen circumstances. The other opportunity is that the Building Committee would turn over to this community a building that is complete and ready for an easy addition that can be done, and that would be an addition that, so if you're building your home, it's the idea of, do you build everything? Do you build something and leave some unfinished space, or do you build the house and leave room to expand on one side as you have a different financial situation, as the family grows, as those become evident? So right now, the Building Committee is in a place where they have a good budget, they have a plan, and the plan involves the opportunity of a black box theater. It does not involve a black box theater. Whether or not that opportunity becomes realized as part of a project, after the project or not realized, is to be seen, and I think that the Building Committee is interested in delaying that decision. And I'm speaking for the Building Committee at this point. I don't sit on the Building Committee, I'm not a member of the Building Committee, I'm there to advise and to report back to this Board. So no, they have not come to this Board and asked for their opinion. They have asked Mr. Mancini and I to weigh in on the value of black box theater. I think that there is instructional value in having a black box theater. It was something that was originally included in the Ed specs, and it was removed from the Ed specs as we looked at other enhancements to the music department that seemed more immediate, that seemed more urgent, to handle the core program, and now it's a matter of monitoring this budget well, listening to this community, and making a good decision moving forward. The architects have been asked to be able to advise on those questions tomorrow evening, and I believe the construction managers have been directed to be able to advise on those sorts of questions and those opportunities tomorrow evening. And then again, two weeks from tomorrow, I believe on September 24th, I think the Building Committee is then expecting to be able to have a better handle on the whole picture and hear public comment on that question because it is a public budget. There are public monies that were approved by referenda, and I know that the Building Committee takes their fiscal responsibility as seriously as they take their educational responsibility to this community.
I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, that's fine. I was going to comment on the state reimbursement. If we include the black box theater in the current plan... If we include the black box theater in the current plan, that would increase the square footage of the proposal as written here. How does that impact state reimbursement?
One way to think of it is that should this community choose to build a black box theater at this time, you could think of those square feet as unreimb, non-reimbursable. It doesn't, it doesn't throw us into jeopardy, it just means that any additions at this point go beyond the figure for which the state will reimburse the community. There's no prohibition to building that space, but we will not receive 30% reimbursement on the square footage that goes into the black box theater. So one way to think of it is, you need to think of it as a cost that is wholly Guilfords'. And I know that's one of the concerns that, that becomes part of this, this balancing of this decision.
Regarding state reimbursement, that's not shown on the sheet. That'll come back at some future time, or how does that work as far as the, the actual expenditures?
This budget does take that into consideration. I'm not sure, Dr. Moore, how to point you to a line on this that shows that. I don't know if that has been netted out in this budget, or, I do know that the, the 92 million, so I could ask, and I could bring back clarification to this board, but I would have to ask how that's considered in this budget document that I've shared.
I don't think it's considered at all, as I would, no, it doesn't net it out at all. This is the cost to build it, and so then this reimbursement comes back.
That's probably correct, because we were required to pass the entire budget, yes, so it's not calculated in this at all.
But we could expect the actual cost to the town to be 30% lower than that, approximately?
30% lower on approximately 205,000 square feet, and then anything beyond that number, and again, I'll point out, we're a little bit beyond that now, but anything, so yes, not, you, you can't necessarily take 92 million and take 30 off of that. It's a much more complicated formula. And there are certain things that go into any school that are reimbursable, somewhat reimbursable, or not reimbursable at all. So the, the theater that exists now, the auditorium, the theater that we are building, is not reimbursed at the same level as classroom space. Theater spaces are not reimbursed at the same rate that a classroom space is reimbursed. There are certain things that are, that are not reimbursable at all, and there's a whole office at the state that will continue to monitor, and anytime there's a change order issued, they will look at every item on that change order and determine if it is reimbursable or non-reimbursable, and our construction managers will debate and argue that point on our behalf as we go through this process for the next two years.
But we, I think we're still on, again, the point to reiterate, though, is we're still on track to get the reimbursement that we represented to the community that we were expecting, and that's, that's, you know, absolutely still on track, and it is still absolutely the case, if this had passed a year later, we would be at 20%.
Absolutely.
So, 20%, whatever it is, yeah.
Prime concern of the building committee to make sure that it does come in at that, so the bottom line is the final bottom line to the community.
In early meetings, oftentimes, the language was that we want to maximize the reimbursability of this project. And again, I know that the building committee, one, wants to turn over a school that will meet the educational needs and make this community proud, and very close, two, wants to maximize the reimbursability and, and manage the finances of this budget and this project very responsibly. And at times, those are competing concerns.
Could I ask on the, I think, we were talking, you said you were involved in a building project once that went over because of some of the abatement and site work costs. When I look at this, I think Dr. Meyer's question via email earlier today was about that being included, which it apparently is included in line three, but if that's part of the guaranteed maximal price, if, if something, if they run into something else, are they not responsible for that, or does that come out of the owner's contingency?
There is generally a lot of debate that goes around that. So if something is run into that is reasonably unexpected, that comes out of an owner's contingency. If it's something that is standard, run-of-the-mill, one of their bidders can't meet the bid that they suggested, then that falls back to covered by the guaranteed maximum price. I worked in a past project in another school district. The testing that was done before demolition was not extensive enough, and when we got into demolition, we realized we had more materials that required abatement than we expected, and we needed to adjust for that. We have done testing in this building, we've done destructive testing in this building, we are issuing, which means we poke holes in walls and see what's behind them, we've done it strategically. We have shared all of our results with the EPA, we are issuing updated reports to the EPA for the time that we continue to occupy this building. We believe that we have good numbers for demolition, but again, until we get to the point that you actually start tearing sections of the building down, you don't know for sure, and so you always carry that contingency until excavation is completed, and then you know you've passed a hurdle, until demolition is completed, and that's late, but that's another important hurdle. And, and there are hurdle, and again, Mr. Ireland could speak to this better than I, but there are certain benchmarks through the project where, once you clear that benchmark, for a long time, we were carrying a significant design contingency. Well, the design's done, for the most part, at this point. We know what we're building, it's been detailed, so that contingency, we've already passed that significant hurdle. But the other ones, you want to make some of those important landmarks.
Okay. So, so I take it there, at this point, there are not even any, any cost estimates for, for any additional work, say, for a black box theater, or something like that?
No, the black box theater was not designed to the detail and the extent that all of the other spaces were designed. The decision was made that if we're worried about the bidding environment, and we're worried about being able to build it on budget, especially as we've started to look at some expanding square footage, to hold off on the complete design. So there have been some conceptual designs, but there are no detailed designs of that black box theater. So should we choose to pursue this, it will need to be designed more completely, which will incur costs that will need to be then priced, and then the work bid or rolled into the other trade bids, and I'm not schooled on the, the specifics of that. A total price for that addition calculated with reimbursement in mind, and then that weighed against the contingency, the owner's contingency, and, and a determination made, again, in my mind, simplistically, of sort of three options. Do we take advantage of the opportunity as part of the project, and open that with one ribbon cutting with the rest of the building? Do we plan for it, but plan on it as something that you do after you've occupied the school for a certain period of time, or decide that it's something not to be pursued? In, in my mind, those are the three broad options that this community and this building committee need to wrestle with and come to, come to determination.
Why don't you go to choose, hey, don't you really need to know how much it's going to cost?
Sure.
Yes, but we don't need to do that today. Again, so the idea of finishing, finishing excavation and getting through the site work phase, so the building, a part of tomorrow's conversation is to identify the timeframe, in what timeframe do we need to make? I guess part of the good news is that we've got the base budget, and there's no rush to make this decision. There's no urgency to have to decide tonight. This budget and this project will be ours for two years, and my understanding from the architects, and from the construction manager, and from the owner's representative, is that we've got a little bit of time to take our breath and do our work, and listen to our community before making this decision.
Yeah, I agree, and you know, the, I mean, from the Board of Education standpoint, I'm happy to hear that you think that there's educational value to this, because that's certainly the most important thing, and I've heard that also from theater department in terms of looking at some models of instruction that are more, I'm missing the word right now, but based around theater, like an academy, or, or that sort of thing. But regarding option number two, which is to go back later and ask for more money, I'm a bit uncomfortable with that just because, you know, the education specifications included this, and that was what we really voted on as, as a community to fund. And while it is a black box theater, it's really a black box space, and I think when we were first discussing that, it was one of the, you know, things in the design that was really sold as a community asset. So I, I think we need to obviously consider it carefully, but I think the voters also, when they approve this project, that was part of what, you know, was expected to be in, assuming it could be afforded.
And one of the interesting points, and thank you for reminding me, the black box theater is a space and a size unlike anything that is in the current program. A classroom is built to, to comfortably house about 25 students. The theater that we have now is built to house, I believe, 640. The black box theater is of a size that would house about 100 people. So you could do different activities in that space that we don't necessarily have a space for now.
Got the approximate square footage that?
I apologize, I don't know. I know it's about 100 people, so maybe the size of four classrooms pulled together, but that's, and again, it hasn't been detailed out. There is rough square footage, but not at the top of my head. The, the only other point that I want to make is I do want to point out that while the, the ed specs did include a black box theater, which the plans don't include now, there are things in the plans which weren't included in the ed specs, and so, they were sort of, like a budget, I guess, they were sort of a target, and we have done much, much of it, not all of it, but we've also done some things that weren't in there. And so again, I've said a couple of times that there were things you could have explained better than I.
That's your chance.
Yes, no. Well, I mean, I, I, look, it's, again, it's terrific, I, the process sounds good in, because you just have to have more data. You, you can't, this is not something that you can say in the abstract, oh, yes, we have, we should do this, or we should do that. We don't have any idea what we're talking about in terms of numbers.
Right.
And, and I'm going to reiterate this, not, not directed at the black box, but just more generally, in, in kind of the same instruction that we give the, the administration relating to our operating budget, and that is, just because the money is there, doesn't mean you have to spend it if it doesn't make sense, if the, if the benefit does not outweigh the cost. It's okay to come in under budget. And in fact, it's more than okay, but it, it's just cost-benefit analysis right now, and, and, you know, it, it would be terrific to finish this under budget with, with a great building. You know, I'm, you know, in the abstract, I, the, the middle of those concepts, the alternatives, is not that appealing to me as I go by, you know, the Branford train station every day, where they're now building the North Side Station that they should have built back 10 years ago, and now, and now the cost of it is triple, or quadruple, the amount that it would have taken at the time, but I, it depends what the numbers are.
And, and please recognize that that chunking is mine and my only, that is my understanding of the task that the building committee has in front of them, it is not anything that they have articulated.
No, I, I get that, and, and, you know, and, but you're right, that, those are the alternatives. I mean, those are, it's not that complicated, but, and, but it depends on the numbers. And, and some other, and the educational value and the benefit, that's for us to talk about, the building committee needs to talk about, you know, the practicality of it, and that's fine. I mean, it sounds like a healthy process, anyway, and, and thankfully, because of where the bidding came in, we can have the conversation. The, the alternative is much worse.
I think it's a healthy process, and in fact, a good problem to be wrestling with right now. Wrestling with the alternatives would be much, much worse. I will assure this board that Mr. Masenti and I are at almost every building committee meeting. We will continue to be, we will continue to participate. I want to note that the building committee is very open to our involvement in any of these discussions. They invite Mr. Masenti as often as they invite me to weigh in on these concerns, and, and we will continue to monitor and participate in those conversations, and keep this board apprised.
Okay. Well, Mr. Ireland, it's a little hard for us to ask you if you have any, any additions.
Sounds great.
But I, I think, you know, we may come back, circle back on this a little bit later, if you have, do you have any observations or comment, do you have any observations about the?
No, I mean, you know, Paul and I talked a little bit, so, some of the things I'm sure he went over, we had talked about already. If there was something specific in terms of a question, I might be able to, you know, add some light on it, but other than that, I'm sure he covered most of it.
One question was on the state reimbursement, and how and when that comes into this worksheet.
Into this work, into the worksheet itself?
Doesn't, I mean, it's not there.
No.
But at some later point.
Well, the, the problem with it is that after you're actually done, is when you actually go to the state. Everything right now is just kind of a, what we think it's going to be. Until you really tie it in a nice little bow, they don't want to see any of it. They've given you indications at this point in time, and commitments, but until they actually see it, they can discard this, they can include this piece.
They will audit the final project.
Absolutely, from, from top to bottom, and hopefully get them on a good day, and, you know? I mean, there's a, there's a process that they have to go through in order to, to make sure that everything is, is complete before they're actually going to sign a check.
Okay. Well, any other comments or questions on that?
I would just note, if I hadn't mentioned it, that the building committee will be meeting tomorrow in this room at 7:00 PM.
Well, in the meeting, you said, the, the meeting in two weeks for the building committee, where the public comment is going to be taken, do you know where that's going to be?
I believe that we plan on meeting here moving forward, but it would be worth, the community would be well-served to check that and confirm that before. I know that tomorrow is confirmed for this room. I believe that we have shifted existing meetings here so that the committee can, it, it's easier on our construction managers, who are spending their day here, and it places the committee here so that while the light affords, they can take some site visits before they go into formal meetings. I anticipate it will be here.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, good, thank you. And, and do you all, members of the committee want to say any, add anything? No? Okay. Just keep us in touch, and we appreciate, appreciate your continued work on this. It's really, even, and the timeline, I take it, is holding. It sounds like you're roughly in, in the, for the class of whatever that is, 15?
September 15, yes, we're still on target for September 15. Site work is going well. There are pops, as Mr. Masenti defines them, daily at the high school now.
Construction lingo.
Spark the boom.
All right, well, great, thank you very much. I guess we will, why don't we revert back to the agenda if we can. Item six on the agenda is communications, and then we did receive some communications about the, the possibility of putting a black box theater into the, into the project, although I think initially we'll listen to, see what the building committee does, and what information they can gather. Any other communications people wanted to raise?
I had one. I forwarded this to the board and to Paul, and it was a follow-up, actually, on the letter to the editor in the paper, is concerned about not having algebra offered as part of the seventh grade. I know we've discussed this as a board, and I've talked about it with Paul individually, and he sent, I think, the board the flow chart, which is, is very interesting to see, but I thought maybe just putting that out there, and I don't know if you have anything you want to just sort of tell the public about that, because it was something that was in the paper, and people have been talking about it, you know, is that true, and how bad is that, what's that going to do, that sort of thing?
I, I can very briefly go ahead and say that this year, as last year, we do not offer a formal algebra offering in the seventh grade. It's not a change for this year, it's a continuation of a curricular change that was made more than a year ago. We do continue to have an advanced seventh grade math placement, so while in the past we had sort of, you know, regular seventh grade math and algebra, we had two levels, we continue to have two levels of math at the seventh grade. The advanced component and the basic component involve significant amounts of algebra, but the course is not called algebra, and it does not meet the high school requirements for algebra. In fact, algebra has been redesigned, ninth grade algebra has been restructured, both in alignment with the Common Core State Standards, and as a result of involvement in the Connecticut pilot on algebra instruction. It is offered at the eighth grade, and components of it are offered in the seventh grade. We continue to have two levels of math at the seventh grade. We also continue to engage in a broader conversation about high-achieving students in general in this district, not just in the area of mathematics, but across the curricula. When we look at the proposed workshop meeting agenda, you'll see sort of a mid-year date where we want to come back and examine that conversation. We will have updates for the board prior to that. We will not be silent on that topic until February. There has been much work over the summer around mathematics instruction in general, high-achieving students in that area, the, the continuum of math courses from the seventh grade all the way through the 12th grade, and in fact, the way that we identify, plan for, monitor, and report out to parents around students who may be achieving at high levels or are formally identified as talented and gifted. There's been a significant amount of work, there was time spent at the administrative retreat on the topic, we will have an update for the board at a future meeting. I didn't think that this agenda would bear that update, and so we are holding it. We will not wait until February. We won't be silent on the topic until then. And there'll be other opportunities for the community to continue to be part of this conversation as well. It won't just be among the board and the administration, the community will continue to be part of that discussion.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, communications?
I got a very strong communication today, trying to understand why we're having so many activities, school activities, on the same night, and the idea of a calendar. Do we have an electronic calendar coming out?
Yes, we are revising the school website, which will have a collapsed whole district calendar. We do have a calendar that we use for planning purposes to try to avoid that, but generally we will find that September, December, and June, it is very difficult to get all the things that need to be done without building and some conflict. And we recognize that, we do the best we can, and we apologize because we don't avoid all conflict.
Yeah, no, it's just for planning purposes.
Yeah, we're working on a whole redesign of the website, and that's one of the, that's a significant component, that you'll be able to go to a calendar that you'll then be able to sort, so you can put the items that, you can view the items that you want to view, because the calendar will have everything centralized on it.
All right. Well, let's go, I think we're, there's no student representative report yet, but I understand we're going to have somebody next understand we're going to have somebody next month.
We have students named, we have juniors and seniors, you'll have three representatives, all of whom or some of whom will be joining you for your October meeting.
Terrific. All right, 8.2, we're in the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Of school?
There's a number of items that I'll try to just touch on quickly. I would like to say that we had a very successful convocation and opening of school this year. Considering the shortness of the summer, considering the work that you've seen evidence of in hiring and training and bringing all of the new staff on board, we had an engaging workshop that was, our convocation, that was a little different than traditional convocations. It sort of felt like we had part one at the end of the summer. We finished with two full days of professional development in a way that we don't usually finish a school year because of the way the weather impacted our calendar. We then had a very short summer and came back to three full days of professional work with our staff. And so convocation was sort of a regathering, and we recognized the new school year, we recognized our new staff members, we welcomed our new staff members, we recognized staff members who had achieved important landmarks like 30 years of service. We also recognized all of our certified staff members who will be achieving tenure this year, and we celebrated that because tenure is something that is important, is not easily achieved in Guilford Public Schools and deserves recognition and celebration. And then we rolled up our sleeves and went right back to the work with which we ended the school year. We went back to looking at the framework for teaching and learning, the foundation of the new teacher evaluation model, and worked as best we could to help everybody see that the work on our plate is not a series of divergent or disconnected tasks. It really is a series of pieces that come together well to create one unified whole. So we used an analogy of tributaries in a river, and once tributaries join a river, you can no longer tease them apart, they become one unified whole, all of it leading to one destination for us, that is deep, meaningful learning for our students, and made the connections for how Common Core and teacher evaluation and the local work that we've embraced, like literacy instruction, like workshop instruction, like a restructure of some of our special education components, all comes together really neatly to help our students learn to really high degrees. And so it was a good day together, the staff had two other days of preparation and professional development, and then our students returned and they returned to teachers who were ready, schools that were ready. We embraced a number of projects in addition to the building project this year, and although some of the windows and cocks may be filled with plywood because the glass hasn't been fabricated, we have a school that has new carpeting and new classrooms, there were classroom reassignments in many of our schools, our custodial staff did a great job along with the clerical support staff, and we opened well, and we had, and it's hard to believe that this is our first full week. It feels like the kids have been back, it feels like they've been to work. We had a very successful opening. In your packet, I have shared a preliminary enrollment report for all of you. I want to point out that we won't have official numbers until October 1, which we will share with the board at your October 15 meeting. But right now, we're tracking at exactly what we budgeted for. We're looking at 62 students fewer than we had last year, and that's all, I think the number that we budgeted around was 60. We knew we were looking at a declining enrollment, we were targeting 60 fewer students. We've had some additional migration out of district, but we had a number of students move in that were unanticipated, and so we sit right where we expected to be, and we will update those numbers and have more conversation for you at your October meeting.
Were they spread out pretty evenly across the grades? That's the problem, you know, if you could, if you could tuck the 60 into one grade, you could.
60 sounds like it should be three, three F's. But when you spread 60 across seven locations and really 15 grade levels, it dissipates pretty quickly.
The number that jumps out to me is the 193 in kindergarten, which seems markedly lower than the others. Is that, do we expect that, or?
It was even, we knew it was going to be low, it was even a little bit lower than we anticipated, and that's a number that we will begin to build from as we look at this year's budget prep and discuss whether or not to include a proposal for full day kindergarten.
Yeah, I mean, the interesting question is, is it partly related to lack of kind of full day kindergarten?
Yeah.
Which is rational?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, the more meaningful number is how, between 193, what's it going to be next year? That's the number I'd like to see.
We do have an influx in first grade, but when we go back and pull the data, it's not as big as anecdotally we believe it to be. So there is an influx in first grade, which speaks to the idea that it's because we don't offer a full day K, but we can go back over five or six years and we can look at that number and we believe we can get a handle on that figure.
That'd be helpful.
Because it looks like it's typically about 20 more kids.
Right.
That come into first grade after kindergarten. And the economy and the change in 2008, 2009, and what that did to family decisions and so forth, too.
Right. Other neighboring districts have had more dramatic decreases than we have experienced. I didn't bring those figures, but we can bring them for the October conversation.
Yeah, be helpful in the October meeting.
We'll be happy to.
Yes.
Getting back to the previous discussion about Guilford High School, the new Guilford High School, they talk here about 1,153 students, but in reality, we're projecting 81 less students. Is that going to impact on our reimbursement from the state?
No, no, the reimbursement is based on a calculation that you do at time of submission. It's based on a history of enrollment, and there is a margin of error. And so we calculated that in good faith, it was accepted, we are still within that margin of error, but even were we not, the reimbursement is locked in in legislation at this time.
If you look at every single one of our schools, too, they've got additions. The reason they have additions is because they were built for a certain size building or population, and growth happens. And now, maybe it's not going to happen in the next 20 years, maybe it's not. But is it going to happen in 30 years? Is it going to happen in 15 years? I don't know. But the bottom line is, we're okay.
Yes, it's a good question.
Okay, any other thoughts about that for now?
No, and then I want to turn over the next couple pieces. I know that you met real life people earlier today, but we wanted to finish the hiring, hiring report with just the numbers, and Jason has that to finish his report before you this evening.
Sure, just to raise some closure to the hiring breakdown, we have 29 new teachers this year, also a high school assistant principal, two deans, and two special education coordinators. Right now, we currently have a few open positions in district due to some recent notifications and the transition of some of our internal hires into other positions. So currently at GHS, we have a .8 family consumer science teacher opening and a 1.0 math department chair opening, as well as a long-term substitute opening at Baldwin in grade five, but those are our openings at this point in time.
All other certified positions are filled.
So the math, math chair at the high school, I take it is, search is ongoing? What's the?
As Ms. Podlinski joined us in the dean's position, her position, so there's both the teaching position that is open as well as the department chair position, and those don't necessarily go hand in hand, yes.
Okay, well, you know, it's been, obviously, it's been a busy summer for the newly existing HR department at Guilford Public Schools, so we know you've done a lot of work this summer, you and Dr. Keen and Dr. Freeman, and so I want to thank you for all of that. It's probably a little more than we anticipated perhaps six months ago, but it's probably the biggest number since the early retirement, right? A few years ago?
We had 20-something in that group.
It is the biggest number that anybody remembers. It's the single largest hire that anybody remembers.
Doesn't mean anything necessarily, but.
That's a tired group, so.
I understand. Well, that's great.
I want to briefly draw your attention to exhibit 8.5, which is a proposed calendar for our workshop schedule, our workshop meetings through the school year. Obviously, this is subject to change as we move through the year, but you'll notice on there some conversations that we engage in annually or that we began last year, school hours. There have been some community members who have asked us to look more closely at school times. Secretary Duncan has weighed in on the debate on school times very recently.
And what'd he say?
He said it's a good idea.
Very documental.
He said that more sleep is beneficial to adolescents.
You think?
So we will be ready to begin a conversation there. We thought it time to make another suggestion to the board about a book for our book club. Now, we very carefully did not bring a book to read for the next meeting. We expect to talk about and maybe distribute a title at the next meeting, but there's no assignment between now and our next workshop.
Good thinking.
I'm a little disappointed. I think you guys need to be talking about more books.
We will have budget conversations that move into our workshop schedule. We have continued to schedule the annual roundtable, in which board members have an opportunity to sit and talk at some leisure and some length with teachers. We want to be able to report out to the board over the course of this school year on November 25th about teacher evaluation. There is an error on your sheet. We want to talk about the new evaluation plan and our rollout and how that is going this year. We want to reengage conversation about the possibility of an international baccalaureate program here at the high school or even here at the high school in Adams. We want to continue our ongoing look at and conversation around the success of our high achieving students and report out to the board mid-year on some of the new or renewed supports that are in place around our special education students. There was much focus on that this year, and many of the new hires that you met are here to support those programs, so we want to report out there. In addition to the certified hires that were introduced to you this evening, we're also excited that we have created a technology integration specialist position this year. That's not a certified position. We're very excited that Andy Raci, who has been with us at the high school for some time as a technician, has moved into that new position. He takes on new responsibilities and a new relationship with the curriculum office because he's not just looking to fix stuff anymore, he's looking to help teachers develop instruction that includes strong technology focused on moving the learning forward, not just to be there as an end in and of itself. So we look to talk with you later in the school year about how that technology integration position is growing and how we're doing with that work, both in the curricular areas and in the classroom. And at the end of the year, we figure that we want to be able to give an end of the year report around teacher evaluation as well. We know that oftentimes we end up adding two items to these agendas, so while the end of the year shows one item each for those late meetings, I do expect that as the year unfolds, as we uncover unexpected work this year, or as we go deeper into some of these conversations, that you might see some of these topics appear a second time later in the year, or we may add a topic later in the year because it becomes important.
Okay. I guess what I'd suggest is that if anybody has any comments on this, let me know, because we don't, as long as you've got enough time to prepare the topic, we can change it whenever we want to change it.
As long as, yeah, we can adjust it before we post the meeting, and so, yes, these are all just to give you a sense of the conversation as the year unfolds, but you and I will finalize each of those agendas just the week before.
And sure, and if, you know, if people have better ideas, let's air it out.
This isn't a better idea, but just a continuation in the finance meeting earlier on, that we had some information about food service, and maybe the next meeting on the 23rd, since that is not too long there, that some conversation about the future impact of budgeting and some of the ideas that you threw out.
Sure.
That we can cover in a workshop session.
Yeah, thank you, and I can add that to the bottom. We also noted that we may need to be updating you on state assessments and how those evolve. And in fact, as we transition into our next topic, we do have our report, our annual report for you on CMT and CAPT performance, but this will be the last report that looks like this. It'll be the last time we share these particular scores with you. And so as the year progresses and as we learn more about what state assessments will look like in the future, we do anticipate that as an agenda item. I'll add food service to the hopper at the bottom, and we can continue to carry topics at the bottom and then build them into the calendar as we're ready to address those.
One other topic that I'd like to see is that we're doing a lot of interesting stuff in special ed and new programs, bringing back some kids from out placements, starting in-house programs. I'd like a report and a discussion about how it's going and are we successful?
Absolutely.
Good, you're going to have more. You can do in separate meetings for FFNE and stuff?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, in the early draft of this, we had FFNE on one of these evenings, and we must have dropped it. So it would be a good opportunity to do some of the FFNE overview in one of these forums. We could bring in the cut sheets, we could bring in the budget sheets, and so FFNE needs to go back on as well. And thank you, that was on an earlier draft, we dropped that somewhere.
Okay, so that'll be this school year?
That'll be this school year, and we will have the architects come to join you, we'll probably have samples of certain items, and we will have what they refer to as a cut book, where you'll be able to see color photographs of pretty much every piece of furniture that goes into this school and how many of each we're buying.
I suggest they bring chairs if they're going to bring samples.
Yes.
Okay.
With wheels on.
All right.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Keen, who's going to finish tonight's report with the CMT, the CMT and CAPT report.
So tonight, I'd like to share with you just the results of our spring state testing. This is the 14th time I have presented this report in Guilford, and I have to say that this is probably the most difficult one for me because I am, it's very, very difficult to interpret what the data means. I would like to thank the principals who are in the audience tonight, I've been meeting with them individually as we are trying to figure out where we should focus and what the data might actually mean in some cases. So just for, to remind you, all Connecticut Public School students in grades three through eight and grade 10 participated in the statewide assessment in March. Students in grades 11 or 12 could have also repeated any part of CAPT if they did not go in a particular subject area. Some special education students might have been eligible to participate in a modified assessment or a skills checklist. We also look at our district reference group, that is a group of districts that have similar demographics, educational level of parents, and income, because we know that there's a strong link between test results and socioeconomic factors. The Math 3 test has four major components, reading, math, writing, and science in grades five and eight, and the levels are advanced, goal, proficient, basic, and below basic. Goal is what is reported, that is Connecticut's goal, and, but we do know that we have many of our students who are also in the advanced range. So looking at grade three, and I'm showing you data since 2009, but you should know that this test has been in existence, or this generation of the test, since 2006. So I hesitate to even look at trends here because we're talking about different cohorts of students, but it does give you a sense over time of what has occurred. And this is a percent of students at or above goal in math, reading, and writing in grade three. And this, of course, is the first year students are expected to take this kind of assessment. In grade four, this is the results over time. At grade five. Grade six. Grade seven. And I apologize, that yellow bar is a little bit hard to read, that's the writing bar, and grade eight. So generally, you're noticing probably that, because all these are on the same scale, of course, that gradually as the years go up, the lines are getting higher and higher on the graph as well. This is our comparison data, we look at the state results, we look at how we are doing and compared to our reference group. And typically, we say, you know, this is a relative picture because it depends on how other people are doing. This year, it's even a little bit more difficult because the test is measuring standards from 2006. So a lot of it depends on how far along the transition to the Common Core State Standards as some of the schools may, or some of the other comparative districts may be. But this is the results in grade three. This is our smallest grade, by the way, and out of this smallest grade, we have the greatest number of students who are skills checklist students or students who are taking a modified assessment in special ed, so our percentages, that's not an excuse, it's fact. So we are, as you can see, above the, the Derg in math, reading. So we are, as you can see, above the Derg in math, reading, and writing, just very close in writing. The proficient number is a number in parentheses. In grade four, compared to our Derg, we are behind in mathematics. We are about even in reading and a little bit below in writing. In grade five, we see that we're down a little bit in math compared to our Derg, still well above the state, significantly ahead in reading, a little bit below in writing, and about equal in science. And this district reference group is a pretty interesting group to be compared to because you have just Farmington, Avon, Cheshire, Madison, Guilford, Orange, I'm just, Simsberry, I'm just trying to name some of them off the top of my head, but you kind of get that sense. In grade six, about equal to our Derg in math, a little bit ahead in reading and a little bit more ahead in writing. In grade seven, we were down in mathematics, about the same in reading and writing as our reference group, up a little bit. And in grade eight, we were ahead of our reference group in all subjects. CAPT is a different test. It is considered a performance test, not a mastery test. It tests students in math, science, reading across the disciplines, and writing across the disciplines. So there are four major components of CAPT, and this is another chart that kind of shows you a trend over time. This generation of CAPT began in 2007. And pretty much across the state, CAPT scores were up slightly, but also across the state, CMT was down in every subject at every grade. And part of the thinking is that elementary schools and middle schools have begun the Common Core state standards transition a little bit sooner than high schools. But compared with our district reference group, we are ahead in every subject and well ahead of the state. So the real interesting conversation goes around our future assessments. So beginning in 2014, 2015, we know that all Connecticut students in grade three who rate an 11 will be taking what we're calling a smarter balanced assessment aligned with the Common Core state standards, and this will be, likely be, an electronic version, although there may be some provisions for some paper copies. This picture happens to show some of our students at Baldwin working on the practice assessment earlier this spring. For this school year, we're still in some planning stages, but we are completing our transition to the Common Core state standards. We've had a three-year process. We had a ready year, go year, I mean, a ready, set, go, and this is our go year. So we're completing our transition this year. The CAPT and the CMT assessments were not designed to measure student learning relative to the new standards. Therefore, we are looking at any increases or decreases with caution. So we're not getting really excited about our growth, and we're not getting real upset about any decline, and there weren't any major pieces there, because we know that changing the tool to measure, as well as changing what we are measuring, is going to make a big difference in how the data is interpreted. The State Board of Education has requested federal approval for an option to administer smarter balanced assessment in English, Language Arts, and Math for 2013, 2014. We don't know yet where they are with that, but we are hoping to take advantage of that option.
But it will be one or the other, right? Either CAPT, CMT, or smarter balanced next spring?
Yes.
Yes.
There will be an assessment next spring. But they're asking for an option so that we don't have to double test. For those districts who would like to take part in the pilot, they're saying, we would like to take part in the pilot or the field test and not have to do CMT and CAP so that students aren't testing, taking two tests simultaneously. So they've requested this option so that schools may have the opportunity to choose whether they want to take the legacy test of CMT and CAP or to take smarter balanced. Now, I haven't said anything about NCSE, but I think it's worthy of mentioning because we do talk a little bit about skills checklist for those students who are the most severely cognitively impaired. And NCSE is the assessment that will be provided for those students, and there is a lot of work, and it is totally aligned to the Common Core state standards as well. Also, I've got the link up here to smarter balanced so that students and parents can look at practice tests, can actually go online and participate in it, and there are a lot of parent resources there as well. More information about the data that you just saw is public knowledge and can be visited at ctreports.com. So that's pretty much what it is this year. I'm not sure exactly what it means. I know that when we meet, principals and I meet together, we talk about the things that we know we're gonna have to pay attention to based on the smarter balanced practice and looking at our CMT data. We look at particular math strands that we know happen to be the focus of the grade, or if they're an application strand, we know that that's gonna be important because it really is about thinking and those mathematical shifts. We are looking at different ways of working on our writing because that only measured really one particular kind of writing on the CMT, and we know that there will be several kinds of writing on the new assessment. So that's what it is. You do have a copy of this in your folders, and if you, you know, need some extra time to look at that, or if you would like, have any very specific questions about any of the data, if you would like to email me or just let me know, give me a call, I'd be happy to go over that with you.
And on subgroups, where are we just underneath the thresholds for which groups, and will there be some changes upcoming that will then potentially make a shift? I don't know if I use a bigger word.
Yes.
In the analysis of what the data means?
Subgroups were actually put together as part of No Child Left Behind, and Connecticut has filed for a waiver from No Child Left Behind. The federal government is also working right now to redesign, and, I mean, it's happening this week, some of that work. So I'm not sure that we will be breaking it out by subgroups in the future. I do know that the state has pulled what they call their school performance indices off the state website because they did find some problems with the metrics, and that was just announced to us, and we noticed that the site had been pulled down. So we are looking at schools, you know, principals always look to see how are our ELL students doing, how are our special ed students doing, how are our boys and girls or our free and reduced lunch as compared with, you know, regular price meal students. So we always look at that to see if there is a pattern, but I don't think it's going to be reported out like that in the near future. I think it's gonna be house standards.
The subgroup size was 20 was the threshold in most of them?
That's correct. Because anything under 20 is really not.
And that was per school itself?
Yes.
For the school performance index, correct.
Right, yep. So plus and 20.
Nothing under 20. At one time, it was 40, and then it was changed to 20, and now we'll see what happens with No Child Left Behind.
Can you give us an indication, just to understand, when you see these things going up a percentage point or down a percentage point? I mean, how many actual students are we talking about that are actually moving this bar?
Well, it...
Because there are, there are trends, and you just don't want people looking at them and say, oh, boy, we're down a percentage point, but it's really, it could be a couple...
It's very small. Our class sizes range...
It's gonna be roughly three kids.
Yeah.
Well, the three kids get zero.
Take your staff loading report and look at the percentages and take 100% and divide out.
Right. Most of the ranges are, we have ranged from about 250 students to 310 students in a grade, and so you can figure out, you know...
The performance of two or three students could change one of those graphs.
Correct. And we also have reports like, I keep very detailed reports, students who maybe have had a medical issue during the assessment, and so their parents, you know, we're gonna leave it blank, or the physician says you're gonna leave it blank. That really has a big impact if you have one or two of those in a grade level. We keep detailed reports about students who might have, you know, emotionally are not able to complete a test even through the makeup, because they're just not emotionally able. So, you know, we do everything we can to support students during the process, but typically, it is, you know, two or three students for a percent.
It's worth pointing out that the CMT and the CAPT have been important measures for us for...
Absolutely.
...a number of years now, but they're only one measure, and it's only one way to look, and it's a good, it's a good reminder that, you know, the performance of one or two or three students affected by any number of variables could have a significant effect on how those aggregate reports look. And it's worth noting again that we're looking at these reports in the midst of transition. We have already changed the targets to which we're instructing, but we are reporting to you with a, an assessment that was linked, it was aligned to the instructional standards of 2006. So the, the release that we made to the press and the line that we have been using is that these, these data need to be viewed with caution, positive or negative, they need to be viewed very thoughtfully and very cautiously because of all that surrounds them in this particular given year.
Also, just to note, there's also, we tend to have two transitions. Or three transitions, then sixth and seventh, then eighth and ninth, where other, other towns, other districts only have two transitions. So it just sometimes makes for a slightly different, slightly different up and down. And the other thing, you know, I just wanted to point out the last thing, we have had literacy coaches, we've had, have changes in math curriculum, we have, and everything takes an initial bump when you make that transition. So whether it's up or down, just changes a little more than expected.
And I anticipate after next year, we'll see even more up and downs.
Dr. Moore?
Yeah, I mean, all that taken into account, I mean, I understand it's one measure, and most of the way, we're holding fairly steady. It looks like, the one that jumps out at me, and you may not have an answer for this tonight, but I'd be interested to hear if there are any theories on it, is that, you know, the grade seven math scores really seem to be taking a, you know, more than a statistical blip of a decrease there. And I, I mean, I don't know if you have any theories on that, or...
At this point, no, but as Dr. Keen said, we're meeting with, the teachers were meeting with the principals, and we're still unpacking this data. This data is...
A week old.
A week old in our office.
Sure, no, I understand that.
Right.
And the other thing that I've asked for in years past, and I'd still like to see with this data, is, you know, while goal is great, and that's probably how the other districts are reporting things, to look year over year, at least in our district, at advanced and what percent are following.
You're right, you did ask that question last year, and we came back with numbers at the advanced level. I apologize that we didn't remember.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that, you know, trended and see where it comes.
And so on the graphs, you showed that we report by goal, but we carried our proficient numbers in parentheses for you. Often, when you read statewide reports, the numbers that will be showing are about students at proficient.
Right.
We and most of the, most of the other schools in our Derg do report by goal. I apologize, you asked that question last year, and we didn't recall to have that information, but we can get that for you at the advanced level.
I mean, I agree with Dr. Moore. It would be interesting, as you get into the data in terms of the various strands within the seventh grade math, is there some areas or some, there's gotta be, you're right, it's, it can't be a statistical coincidence, so there's gotta be something.
And we need to look at that, you know, very carefully, and just, I mean, math is really the place where I think it's going to be, it's really hard to determine anything from the CMT, and I'll tell you why. Because, remember, with the Common Core state standards, we've been working very hard about fewer standards, going deeper, focus at each grade level where the standards focus, and yet, the CMT measures 13 different strands at every grade level, you know, so you've got, or 13 to 16 strands. And so what we're saying, okay, we're really gonna focus where the standards focus, and yet, if the CMT comes along and says, oh, you know, we're gonna measure this broad thing, then it's really not a really good measure of our instruction. So when you get to that, you know, you've got an issue with the content validity of the assessment.
So we're looking at breaking out those strands and trying to sort of, right?
Yeah, I mean, and recognize there are different cohorts, but, you know, we're, in grade six, you're at, you know, 85% in math. In grade eight, you're at 90, almost 92%, so...
Right, where's the blip and what's the coverage?
Right, I mean, there's gotta be some difference, there's gotta be something with the way our curriculum aligns with this particular assessment or something, there's gotta be a neutral explanation.
Right. Well, and notice that our, our new curriculum isn't aligned with this assessment at all.
We understand that.
Right.
We understand, but it would be nice to be able to say, look, we took a look at it, and the reason is because nobody got this strand right because we don't teach it.
And in fact, we're not just unpacking those locally, we're looking at some other districts and asking them if they're asking those same questions. So, yes, we need, we know we're diving deeper into that particular area. We just haven't done the dive and don't have the results to report to you.
No, we don't expect that, yet.
But we do get, do we get the data at that level? I mean, obviously, individual kids or parents of individual kids get, you know, strand comments. We get that in the aggregate for all the seventh grade and the eighth grade?
Well, I don't get it in the aggregate, I get it at the individual...
No, I know we can, but I'm wondering...
I get it at the individual level, but I can, I can get an aggregate of it. At the strand level, yeah. We get it by school?
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be a neutral, there's gotta be a reasonable explanation. Yeah, I'd just like to know what it is. And I will just highlight again, the 10th grade scores are really outstanding, again.
Yes.
You know, the, we, you mentioned that the socioeconomic factors are important factors. If they were the only factors, however, we would be below the, the reference group in almost every area, or in every area, because we are at the socioeconomically toward the bottom of our reference group. But when we're significantly ahead of the reference group in all four areas, that's outstanding. So let's hope we can continue it with the smarter balanced assessments and keep it moving.
We will respond to the questions that you've asked, and we will continue to keep our eye on the new horizon moving forward, but we'll respond to those questions that you presented here tonight.
Good. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, thank you. So we're on the board agenda. Item 9.1 is personnel items, and first is to ratify the resignation of Kimberly Vigliotti as a high school dean. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And ratify the appointment of two administrators, one Joel Reben, dean of students at the high school, and the other Heather Gieske, elementary school's coordinator of special ed. Is there, that's effective September 30th. I understand she's, her current district is not as anxious to have her leave as we are to hire, have her on.
They're in no rush to let her go, but they're working with us, and if they can fill their vacancy sooner, we'll have her sooner rather than later.
That's fine, what are you gonna do? So anyway, is there a motion to ratify those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And ratify the resignation of teacher Beth Cafferty, family in consumer science at the high school. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, to ratify the appointment of two teachers, Jane Cox, English at the high school, and Samantha Riordan, the alternative ed program in science also at the high school. Is there a motion to ratify their appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And we are, how close are we to having every...
And we are, how close are we to having every spot filled, Jason?
As I mentioned before, the positions are open, applicants are, Mr. Vicente is reviewing the applicant form. I would assume within the next week or so, we should have someone in place, week to two weeks.
So we're very close.
Yes.
And actually, Mr. Blas, if I may?
Yes.
One item on there. Joel Reben, in fact, is married to a part-time teacher at the high school. Our policy around this requires that I notify the Board of Education of that relationship. And I do want to note that we have also taken all measures to ensure that Mr. Reben is never in a direct supervisory line from Mrs. Reben. So we will make those accommodations, and I wanted to bring that relationship to your attention as per policy.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions about that? Any thoughts? Okay. Thank you. All right, 9.2, we've received a budget timeline, boy. Looking forward to that.
Didn't we just do this? Just like the summer, it goes fast.
It does. All right, so we've got this draft timeline. I guess we can take a look at it. You're, really, the board doesn't have a lot of involvement until the 28th of October when we meet with the leadership team. And then shortly thereafter, start to work with the finance, the workshop. And also, is it on here when we're meeting with the Board of Finances Committee?
Down at December 9.
December 9.
Don't we want to invite them to the, to the October 29th workshop? Their, at least their education committee?
I think it makes great sense. I mean, again, that's sort of early in the process, that's before we're really presenting anything. It's a chance for the board to hold an open house and listen to what the community would like to see represented in this upcoming budget. It would be great to invite them.
Might as well invite them. You know, it's up to them.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, well, there's nothing to do with this, I don't think, right now. It's, again, subject to change. You know, most of the dates are dependent on, or they're built off of the, the referendum date, which is fixed by charter. So if people have comments about this, if there's some obvious omission or, or something we should change, I think just let me know, and we can act accordingly.
Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, the only major note, the facilities committee, again, under Mr. Ireland, is our timeframe's there to get forward bonding projects and numbers and work with Mr. Gurnam on that. For things that would be potentially bonded, and them to understand and have some reactionary time before the January presentations.
I should probably note, there has been some conversation between the, the town and the school about building some consistency among bonding requests, and so we'll continue those conversations. And that may affect the timeline for this year as we put together our bonding needs and work to coordinate those with the town's bonding needs.
Well, in fact, it wouldn't surprise me if Mr. Ireland was to talk about the facilities needs assessment somewhere later in the agenda, but that might have some impact on that. All right, anything else on that? Item 10 is unfinished business. Item 11 is reported to the policy committee. Is there anything, Mrs. Dudley?
Uh huh.
Then, then Mr. Ireland, we're up to 11.2, the facilities committee.
Yeah, we met a couple of weeks ago and just kind of, it was very brief because we were still waiting for the need, all the needs assessments to come in. They have come in, they have been forwarded and put together for the facility committee. We're looking to probably meet, I think, next week to kind of go over them and get a presentation from the, the group that actually put them together, to give us a better understanding. It's, it's a lot of information to digest.
It is, it's hard to get through.
Lots of buildings, et cetera. But we're going to be doing it next week, so I expect more report towards the end of the, end of the month.
Okay. All right, well, as soon as you think we should put that on the regular board agenda, just let us know and...
Yeah, I mean, I think we should, I mean, Cliff, I think, is also doing his, does he do a annual facilities review at some point? Is that the next, is that October?
I don't know if he's ready. I know with the shortness of this summer and working on getting the actual projects done, I don't know if that report will be somewhat delayed. The shortened summer affected facilities dramatically this year.
So you, maybe we can combine it a little bit with that.
Yeah, that would be...
But it should be, I would, I would expect to do the October, beginning of October, it might be a little tight, but the October workshop.
Okay. All right. It's just to the extent that there are issues that would, might implicate bonding this year, that the sooner would be better than later, obviously. Okay. Finance committee, anything new, different? All right. We've already done 11.4, high school committee, 11.5, town committee liaisons. Anything?
There, I think there's going to be a request that we start reporting our energy on a consistent basis from the Energy Task Force. So in other words, we report things as things like heat in our budget, and somebody else reports it as oil consumption, and somebody else reports it. And they're trying to get a little more consistent in terms of consumption and understanding what those numbers are, so trying to get a little more consistency going across.
From how we...
It's something that's going to be coming up. I don't know if you've already seen it or not.
It's a great conversation. We'd be happy to participate in it.
Okay. All right, anything else on committees? All right, item 12, public questions. Anybody? Please. Come on.
Please come on.
My name is Marion Breeze, and I live at 42 Arrowhead Drive in Guilford. And I apologize, I wasn't sure if I should speak before, when it said to speak about items on the agenda. There was the building committee on the agenda, but black box wasn't specifically, so I thought I should wait. I am here tonight to talk to you, to ask you about the fate of the black box at the new high school. I do understand it was spoken about at length earlier, but I, I actually have a request for the Board of Ed. And I think it's important to continue the conversation tonight because the black box will have a direct impact on the educational opportunities that reach beyond theater students. And it reaches to the rest of Guilford High School and to the broader community as well. And Dr. Freeman touched on this a little bit earlier. I want to first clarify what a black box is, because there's been some discussion about what it really is. It's a large black space with flexible seating and staging, and includes multimedia and other audiovisual amenities. In a school setting, though, it's more accurate to call it a black box facility or a black box classroom than just a theater. Because of its size and versatility, the space can be used as a theater or as a classroom. It's great for multimedia presentations or for student government projects. It's a perfect space for professional development and for community presentations and lectures. The Institute of Education at the University of London describes the use of a black box as a more flexible teaching environment, which I think Dr. Freeman alluded to, that 100 people in a space. It facilitates collaboration among the students and staff in a way that's just not possible in a standard classroom setting. It costs less to operate than the large auditorium, and it can be designed so that the Guilford High School facilities staff can control access to the rest of the school. It can be rented out for anywhere from $725 per day to $125 per hour. For theater, this space allows students of all ages to become more accomplished technicians and actors. It also makes rehearsal time much more efficient. Given that up to 120 students are involved in a single production, this would make a big difference to families and to students. And for students who are considering ECA for performing arts, adding this facility makes Guilford High School a stronger, better option. It also gives you, as the Board of Ed, the flexibility to add a performing arts academy, and it would be useful for international baccalaureate accreditation, which was also mentioned earlier this evening. Hamden High, Staples, and Greenwich currently have black box facilities. Amity will begin using their new black box this year. One article I read stated that a black box is a habitat for 21st century learning. You're smiling, I think you read that one. From physics experiments to recreating a historical debate, there's a broad range of educational opportunities for adults in our community as well as for children of all ages. Coincidentally, when TSK Architects hosted a two-day workshop that I attended at the very beginning of this project, the facilitator talked a great deal about 21st century learning. The current status of the black box is, right now, in limbo. According to a letter I received last week from the building committee, it was stated that it's a lower priority. That obviously concerns me. Superintendent Freeman wrote that, "At this time, the building committee is moving forward with plans that will allow for the placement of a black box at some future time." But TSK Architects has yet to produce a viable plan for including the black box at the high school at any point. I'm hopeful that that will change tomorrow night and in the weeks to come. But at this point, there's no, there is no plan to actually have the space allocated on the site. It should be part of this project. I'm asking you, as the Board of Ed, to consider advocating for the black box facility. Please ask the building committee to direct TSK Architects to at least design a viable plan, which we don't have right now. Up to now, I'll be honest with you, TSK has been resistant, and it's, they've told us that it's not in keeping with their aesthetic version, a vision for a new school. There's a building committee workshop, as Dr. Freeman mentioned, tomorrow night, and a public meeting on September 24th. So while we may be able to wait a while for the final decision to be made, I think it's really important that the Board of Ed consider taking a more advocacy-type position for the black box facility and to work with the building committee on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we, right, without repeating everything that was said before, I think we just need more DAP and, and see where, where things are. I think you've, you've expressed that it would be a good thing to have, and frankly, if, I mean, from my personal opinion is if, if, if there's architectural resistance to it because of aesthetic reasons, I kind of don't care that much about that, to be honest with you.
The architects will be reporting tomorrow. They have been directed to begin working on such a plan.
Okay.
And part of the contract with them, and Paul can speak to it more specifically, is that there's an extra cost, how the architects get involved with that because it's above and beyond their contract. So that is one of the cautions that I know is in the conversation piece with the building committee at the least.
We just got to have the information.
Right, but, and those design costs will be built into the overall cost impact that the VC, yes.
But they are extras, they would be one of the first extras that they would be voting for if it was to be told to, or them to do it.
Because of the decision to not design it when everything else was designed, yes.
And I mean, that's not saying I'm not for it, I'm just saying that's a fact that is part of the contractual pieces.
It's a fact, but we don't know the answer to what the fact is. So we, we, we need to know, we just need to, we need information.
Absolutely. Mrs. Breeze, thank you for your efficacy. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your letters. You've done great service to this community. Thanks.
Are there, are there public questions or comments or anything else? All right. Then, given that we, I'll say new business, even though I'm resistant to doing so. Is there any new business that we should, that we should properly add to the agenda by a vote of two-thirds?
It's a really narrow question.
We never blindside you, so we've gotten in trouble.
No, I know. I'm sort of fond of not violating FOI. If we can avoid it, that would be not what I'm looking to do. All right, item 16, 14, I'm sorry, is an executive, brief executive session.
Can be very brief.
On teacher negotiations and administrative negotiations. We are, we should say to the public that we continue to be in negotiations with the teachers' union and the administrative union, and one is farther than the other, and we are, we are continuing to negotiate, and we'll keep the, keep the public apprised